Thank you for all coming out tonight. Welcome to the second City Commission Planning and Zoning Board. And I believe we have some members of our community appearance board here tonight, workshop regarding the land use amendment for the Lighthouse Point Yacht Club. Two preliminary orders of business. We are suspending all parking violations tonight, so don't worry about it. If you have any issues, the Chief of Police is back there. He'll take care of you. The second order of business is we have a lot of people here tonight. We have a lot of stuff we want to cover, so if you can silence your cell phones, that would be appreciated. What I think we're going to do tonight is probably the exact opposite of what we did at the last commission workshop. A lot of that time was dedicated to a presentation by Mr. Patterson and comments from the commissioners and the members of the planning zoning board. We stated last week, or last time we were here, that we wanted to give the public ample opportunity to comment on the project and the proposed land use development. So what we are going to do tonight is we're going to dedicate the majority of the meeting to public comment. And so let me explain how that's going to work. We're going to give Mr. Patterson 10 minutes to start the meeting to provide an update. He's going to use the 10 minutes any way he wants. I'm not going to cut you off at 10 minutes, no offense. I'm telling you now like I did last time. I keep a pretty tight clock, as people know. And then I'm going to open up the public comment.
John, John next.
Oh, you want to do John? Okay. Then we'll turn it over to Mr. Lovitzky. He'll give everybody a review of the DRC comments. The Design Review Commission is city administration, the mayor, and the department heads' job to look at the project as proposed and provide comments to the City Commission and the Planning and Zoning Board as to why the project as proposed now, this is very summary, but does not comply with the city code. Or does, or does, or does. Fortunately, here, there's a lot of ways, let's be honest. But then, what we're going to do is then, after we get the DRC comments, we're going to turn it over to the members of the audience. You're going to come up, you can state your name, your address, speak into the microphone, because this is all a public meeting, it's being recorded, and you'll have three minutes to address the commission and planning and zoning board and the members of the community appearance board, who I see out in the audience, on what your thoughts are about this project. Another thing to remind you, this is not, there will be no official action taken tonight. These are commission workshops. We're not going to vote on anything. Nothing official is going to happen. There's going to be plenty of other opportunities for public comment when this goes before the planning and zoning board, and when this comes back, this goes before the city commission. This is not going to be your only opportunity to speak. The one thing you're going to hear from everybody is this is still pretty early in the process. So if you don't want to speak tonight, or you have questions that you're formulating in your mind, it's fine if you don't want to speak tonight. We're all pretty accessible. You can email us. There's going to be plenty of time for comment. So with that said, this is a large room. We're trying to record everything. It's an emotional issue. I think everybody gets that up here. If we could, we have a good vibe, what's going on out there, sitting up here looking at all you guys. So just to keep it orderly meeting, you know, the cheering, the applause, and the hooting and hollering on either side of the equation, say it in public comment. That would be appreciated. I know it's hard. It's hard for us up here sometimes, too. But with that being said, we'll turn it over to Mr. Patterson. Or his attorney. Start the clock for ten minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the planning zoning board, city staff. Stephanie Toothacre with Tripp Scott on behalf of Patterson Development. Of course, we're here tonight on the Lighthouse Point Yacht Club Proposed Redevelopment. I just wanted to, you made this very clear, but I wanted to reiterate, there are very many steps in the process. We are at the very, very beginning. The only application that has been submitted to the city of Lighthouse Point is a land use plan amendment. In fact, the site plan itself has not been formally submitted. The land use plan amendment requires multiple hearings, both at the city and at the county level, and then back at the city level. That's usually a year process. We're at the very beginning of that process. This also requires a rezoning, which has multiple hearings. It also requires approval of a site plan, which requires multiple hearings. None of those applications have even been submitted yet. And on top of that, we have been talking a great deal with the DRC and the city about the fact that some of the code sections don't really seem to accommodate a mixed use like this, which has, has come together with the yacht club. So we've been talking to the city about trying to form some kind of, perhaps, an overlay district that would accommodate this use. Again, those are just discussions. Nothing has been formally submitted, but we are very aware, as we've continued to meet with the DRC, that these are all challenges that we have together as a community, as a city, and we are very open to hearing from the city, from the neighbors, and I want to just make it clear, because we've been asked a lot about the project and where we are, that we are at the very first step in the process and probably have at least a year to go. So we appreciate very much the opportunity to be here again tonight. I know Terry's going to share with you some renderings. This is the application that is pending at the city for the DRC on the land use plan amendment, so there have been no changes to what the DRC has seen. The DRC comments are this exact plan. As you know, the zoning is actually a business zoning. The yacht club's full property is owned business, B2A. It has a commercial recreation land use. The land use and the zoning both need to be amended to accommodate a residential development, which will be more compatible to the residential development that it's adjacent to. We've also addressed some things about how this hometown home community would be able to always use the yacht club. Those are legal documents that we hope to work with your city attorney on. Those are questions that we've been asked, that we feel that we have very good answers for. And I'm just going to wrap it up by saying thank you again for the opportunity to be here, for setting up these workshops for us to hear from the community, so that we can respond with a project that we hope everybody can be proud of.
Thank you.
I need my 10 minutes.
What?
I need my 10 minutes.
Nice try.
No?
We'll do 10 minutes. Let's see, I want to get the comments, public comments from the public, so.
Okay. I'm going to read this really quickly. "Thank you to the city for holding such a workshop for us, and thank you to everybody for attending. This process is very valuable and appreciated by me, my partners, and members of Lighthouse Point Yacht Club. Since time is limited, I will not repeat anything I said in the last presentation. So if anybody wants, if anybody in public wants a copy of the previous presentation, please email the yacht club, and we'll email it to you. Our goal is to add to Lighthouse Point's amazing, unique community by adding luxury-gated yacht club residences within the walls of our private club. The main reason for the residential aspect is to raise funds to build a new, improved Lighthouse Point Yacht Club, to bring our yacht club out of the 60s into the 21st century. Just like, as a community, we need to build a new city fire station, police station, civic building, dan wood, dan wood park, and library. The difference is, we can't get a $20 million bond, nor does the community want to pay for, nor does the community want to pay for it in the form of yacht club assessments and dramatically increased dues. We must raise, we must raise most of the money by building and selling townhomes. Many people on this DS and in the audience are familiar with the yacht club's financials and are very aware that it's, of its inability to carry a large mortgage. Lauderdale Yacht Club is in, Lauderdale Yacht Club is also rebuilding right now, but they are only about half the size, only about half the land that we have, so they can't develop and are forced to raise $19 million from their members, who have, who have to pay over 20 years in the form of assessments. We don't want to put that burden on our members, nor would they accept it. Even though, even though we're a private yacht club, we are very aware of the important role we play in, to the success of our community. We want, we want to continue being the city's venue for successful city and charitable events, including Taste of Lighthouse Point, Keeper's Day, Lighthouse Point Saltwater Fisherman's Meeting, Serostomus, Women's Club, Hillsborough Inlet Sailing Club, Upper North Exchange Club, and many others. We also use our facilities to host and sponsor a number of philanthropic, philanthropic events, which, which is something we care about continuing into the future." You want me to continue after?
There might be time at the end. I don't know how many people. That was only five minutes. That was only five minutes. You get five more. We're all here, we have two more minutes.
Additionally, we play, additionally, we play an important role in being a gathering place for our older members, of which are most over 80 and have been with the club for many years. These members no longer pay dues because we feel, we feel, because we should be thanking them for their many years of support by being here for them. This is the main reason we want to build the Tennis Center Bistro as soon as possible, to act as a temporary clubhouse, so that these important ladies and some gentlemen have their daily games and social gatherings that are so important to them and us. I can spend an hour just to list the many important, the many more important reasons for you to support our proposed, our proposal to build a new category four-five resident, a category four-five hurricane-resistant club. Many more reasons why we need the money to better serve this community for many years to come. But we're here tonight to hear from the community instead, not me, however, I've got a lot more to say. I just want to show everybody that these townhomes are not as big and scary as the people are trying to make them seem. These renderings are 100% to scale with the surrounding homes, showing the perspective. We have many 35-foot tall homes with 16-foot separation between buildings all around us, marked in red on the screen. I can also point out many houses in the surrounding neighborhood that are double lutz and are over 113 feet wide, some up to 140 feet. However, to try and help mitigate the concerns of 35-foot tall townhomes right next to single-family homes that also have 35-foot height restrictions, we've designed our first buildings far from the property lines and behind very heavy landscaping. On the south, on the southwest border, we placed the first building 49 feet from our neighbor's house, on a park, and a large trees in that space. On the southeast, next door to Joe's house, we also have a small park with large trees, and first buildings are between 37 to 22 feet from his house. Along the street, we have buildings 40 feet from the setbacks. All the homes on the street are only 25 feet from their setbacks. We have also eliminated three more townhomes to create another open field by, another open field surrounded by large trees. This will double as overflow parking for the five or six times a year that we need it. Please see the detailed site rendering to fully appreciate what we have done to minimize our impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Clearly, this is far more compatible than the commercial recreation zoning that we currently have. Also, this grass parking lot is far more pleasing than more paved parking lots. Now, to discuss the financials, what I'm, what I'm going to, what I'm, what I'm going, what I'm going to show you now is a simplified version of a detailed performance. We've been very clear from day one that we intend to use all the profits from the townhomes to build a new club. Now, just the, not just the profits as a developer, but Patterson Project Management is a shell contractor, drywall contractor, and GC. Therefore, the profits that normally go into a GC and, and their trades will stay in the club. And even then, building 33 townho, luxury townhomes, and hoping everything goes perfectly well, we will still be left with $5 to $6 million in debt after it's built for the new club and putting in all the furniture. This is very, I-
Large, add a little bit of beauty to it.
I'm doing it, I'm doing it. I will gladly share the details of this with anybody who's willing to wait the time with me. I can't show you, but you can see where on column J, so there's a hell of a lot that I've hidden here, but please, please come and spend the time with me. 57 million in sales, development sales, 2.8 million in real estate commissions, 10.3, total of 16.3 million of the gorgeous purchasing and closing costs of the club.
That's your time, Mr. Patterson. You have two minutes.
Okay. 23 million in development costs on the, on the, on the townhouses, 12.9 million development. That's hard costs at my GC's cost price on the club. Here are all the soft costs. We've accounted for everything. A lot of people say, well, what if, what if, what if? If you go through this, you'll see we've accounted for every little thing. 4 million soft costs on the development, 2 million on the club, 6 million total. Leaves us $4 million in debt.
Is that after you've finished the club?
Yes. After we build the club, after we take the profits, after we do everything, we still have $4 million debt, before we spend probably $1.5 million on interior design.
You're sure you want to do this, right?
Of course I want to.
Terry, what's your profit if you take away the club?
16.8 million. That's what me and my partners are giving up, to do this for our community. The point here, why I'm showing you this, I've heard from the, it's all because we need, we need the 33 townhouses. Let me, let me get, I've heard from, I've heard from city officials that we will be making much more money for the new club, so we should be able to afford that high mortgage. Well, who can guarantee that? We aren't building the club or banquet facilities any larger than we have it right now. A marina is always, is always already 100% full, which is one of our big sources of revenue. So all that we hope happens is that we attract more, more of the community to join as members and can attract some of the higher-priced weddings. Those private events, those private events and membership dues are the only place we make money. And no matter how well we do, we can't afford another $10 million mortgage like we have now. And the community doesn't want a club that is too expensive for its own community to enjoy. My point is that 33 townhouses is our absolute minimum to make the numbers work. I've mentioned that we have spent $350,000 today on any plans, variations, legal, and research to figure out exactly what the club needs to survive and thrive into the future. Another major concern that we keep on hearing from the public-
I'm going to, I'm going to, I have a feeling depending on who speaks, lots of time at the end, but.
A lot of the things that people are going to say right now, I have, I have answered in this last paragraph, if you just let me get through it. Another major concern I'm hearing from, from people is the fear that we will build the townhouses and not follow through with building the clubhouse. There are many reasons why this will never happen. One is that the existing clubhouse is in the way of the townhouses. Second is that the project will be a bank-funded project, so we intend to start construction on the clubhouse within six months of breaking ground, not finishing, breaking ground on the first three townhome buildings. And the profits will eventually pay off the clubhouse, the construction loan. This is how the bank is comfortable to loan us the money. Also, the bank will make sure that the project is completed in its entirety. It is not in any financial institution's interest to loan money without knowing they can finish the project with or without the borrowing. Thank you for listening, and I look forward to your questions and comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Terry, quick question. You said you would, within six months of breaking ground on the townhouses, you would start a yacht club clubhouse? Forgive me, because I've got a cold tongue.
No, of course, yes. Our goal is three months, but I'm just, people hold me to everything that I say.
What would your anticipated building timeframe for the clubhouse?
18 months. Hopefully less, but I'm looking on the, on the, on the, as long as 18 months.
Okay, so let's say as long as then, two years from the time you break ground, you said six months plus 18, so two years, right?
Two years from breaking ground on the townhouses. We plan, we want to start with the first three buildings.
And how long do you think it will take to do the townhouse?
18 months per building. And that all depends on sales, because the bank only releases the funding for each building once you sell two out of five units.
Thank you. Before we go over to public comment, I mean, this is kind of, that was, that was an ideal goal of doing it in that order, but do any commissioners have any other comments or questions before? Terry, do you have a pre-sale requirement on the financing?
The pre-sale requirements will match how my project in Lauderdale by the Sea right now, my 29-unit build development there. I build everything in, 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 in separate buildings. The bank, the bank pre-approves us for a loan, a, a, a construction line of credit, and then, but they only release the funds for the vertical construction on each building. And I approve to them from my, my, that I approve on how much it's going to cost, and then they check it through their engineers. They're going to want 40% of each building sold, so it'll be two out of five before they release the funds of each building. That's another way to guarantee that these things are going to get done, because we take a 30% deposit, which is a requirement if we're accounting for new construction. So with a 30% deposit on each building, that's a million dollars deposits on each building, and then another 3.25 million dollar funding from the bank per vertical, per building. So it's very structured by the bank.
So they have a pre-sale requirement, and then do you have a maximum number of unsold units as well?
No, it doesn't matter. So if I pre, it's, it's per building. However, they probably are going to limit the, the line of credit. Where they're going to limit to, I don't know yet. Maybe it's 20 million, maybe it's 30 million. So I have to finish a certain amount of buildings first, before, once I hit the limit, I will have to be closing on some of the buildings for that to come down. It's exactly the way my project right now works.
Thank you, House Commissioners, planning and zoning board members. Okay, stars of the show, the public. Oh, John, I keep forgetting John. John, sorry, John. John Lovitzky is our city administrator. He's also been, had the fun job of manning the DRC committee meeting, so.
Good evening, John Lovitzky, city administrator. Commissioner Gioppi, as you said in the beginning of the meeting, the development review committee looks at, looks at the proposal compared to our city code, the technical aspects of the code. So since your last workshop, we had a development review committee on October 3rd, and then the minutes of that meeting and all the department heads' comments are in your packet material. But the packet material that was provided, the site plan, was a different site plan provided by the applicant, so the, so the development review committee did not review the site plan that was with your packet. We looked at it quickly today, and it looks like the front entrance is the only change, but we haven't, we haven't gone through it. We also had at the diocese this evening a site plan that we did review, so that's the site plan that, that the DRC reviewed. Generally, from the, from the DRC's perspective, the development doesn't meet the city code requirements, and many of the comments from previous DRC meetings remain unresolved. The project has a lot of mass, you know, with the three-story townhomes that have five units. Our, our city code only allows four units and 90 feet in width, and these are five units, 114 feet in width, so there is, there is mass there. There's also deficient parking. The B2A zoning district where the yacht club will be calls for 200, one parking space for every 200 square feet. And the city doesn't recognize the valet tandem parking proposed by the applicant. And also, our city code requires a marina to have one parking spot for every boat slip, and there's 78 boat slips at the marina. So the, the parking is woefully short. And one thing, too, we noticed that during the DRC was the parking, the size of the parking spaces that they're proposing, our code requires nine, nine-foot width by 18-foot long, and the proposal is nine-foot width and 16 and a half, or 15 and a half foot long. So even the, the spaces provided, they're short of parking, but even the spaces that are providing, the spaces themselves are smaller. One item, too, is the commercial use of docks in a residential zone district. The applicant is proposing to rent the docks behind the townhomes, and currently that wouldn't be allowed by our city code. Also, the pervious spaces is short. The, you know, there's, there's a certain percentage of pervious space, 25%, pervious space, 75% impervious, and what the applicant is proposing, or what you put on the site plan, they're not counting the interior roads. So if you count the interior roads, then they're, they're really short on pervious space. Impervious space affects drainage and affects the lush looking of a property. Also, the setbacks, you know, if they're going to meet the RM16 zoning district, the setbacks are 25 feet from the road and 25 feet from the water, and they're proposing 20 and 25. Also, the traffic study in the land use plan development, it says there's actually going to be less, less traffic. We just find that hard to believe, that there's going to be less traffic on the parcel. So we ask that the city, we get another traffic study done that the city will get, but the applicant will pick for it. Also, a big issue is emergency vehicles still don't have access to all the parcels. The fire chief and police chief are, are very concerned about, about the access of emergency vehicles, and also the alignment on the previous site plan that the city, that the DRC reviewed. The alignment going into the yacht club was off, and now he's, he's proposed a different alignment, you know, going into the yacht club. One thing, too, that the traffic study didn't take any traffic counts or any, any estimates on when the traffic is, is going to be on 27 Terrace, Northeast 39th Street to the entrance way. So what's, what's the stacking going to be like? Also, the circulation on the parcel, the police chief had a lot of difficulties with the circulation on the parcel. These are just some of the, I mean, some of the bigger issues. There's a lot of things that would happen when we reviewed the site plan, but our city planner is concerned about the compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. There's increased traffic, insufficient parking, insufficient pervious space, there's drainage deficiencies, and limited access for emergency vehicles.
Any questions from Mr. Lovitzky? Can I go to the public and everybody? Okay. But, um, so, actually, I have this. Mr.?
John, were you evaluating this as an overlay district that'll develop its own standards, or are you evaluating it relative to our current land development?
We're, we, we evaluated it based on our current city codes, not as an overlay district.
So how would you handle separation between commercial and residential, put them together on one property?
That's, that'd be a better question for Michelle Melgren. I think she'd, she'd be better to answer that question. She's our city consultant planner.
I know her very well. In a good way.
I'm sorry, yeah, Michelle Melgren, I'm the city planner. What was your question again, Mr. Gallup?
Well, I was, you could look at this as relevant to our current land development regulations, which require certain separations, walls, buffers between residential and commercial, or as an overlay district where those things would go away and you develop new regulations. How will we evaluate any applications?
Right now, we're looking at the application just in terms of, as the city administrator said, what our current code provides for. There's been discussion about new regulations, whether it's an overlay or a completely new zoning district. I don't think we've gotten that far yet.
Excuse me, Michelle. I believe Mr. Patterson and Ms. Toothacre have requested to do a concept at the planning and zoning meeting on November 6th. I think you're still targeting that, last I heard, so we have not seen that yet. That is what they're targeting.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Mr. Patterson, could you put up, it's easier for me to see it up there, could you put up the plans, like the, the architectural plans? Yep, thank you. Now, finally, we'll turn to the public. Ground rules are, come up, state your name, your address, you'll have three minutes to speak. And then, when you're done, since sometimes we don't have a lot of people speaking at these meetings, they need to keep a record of your name and your address, so you could go to the back and write down your name and your address after you're done speaking. That would be great. I'm going to try to keep everybody to three minutes, but as you can tell, I'm kind of a softie, even though I try to attack the big game, so we'll, we'll try and, we'll try and be fair with everybody's time, so. Who wants to go first?
My name's Michael Holmes, 2242 Northeast 26th Street, the beautiful city of Lighthouse Point. The other day I got home and I was able to look at this fine document, newsletter from our fine mayor, okay? It talks about, basically, we continue to focus on improvements throughout our wonderful city. We're talking about improvements on street paving, the new pot center, the playground Danwood, which my grandson's going to love, improve tennis courts. He talked about the bond issue, which I'll tell everybody here, we need to vote for the bond issue. Make sure we're doing that, okay? Because that's important, okay? We're talking about, this, this letter here explains that we're looking at a unique opportunity in November for a safer, more sustainable place to live and work, a new state-of-the-art fire station. We're looking at a signature building at the major interests of our city where that old gas station is. Let's get rid of that thing. I got it, okay? We're talking about expanded and upgraded recreational public works. A bond issue includes funds to remodel, expand, and improve our public works building. I am confident, Mayor says, that together we will always improve our wonderful city and grow to be more exciting each year and be the best city in South Florida. I got it. This is great. This bond issue is important, okay? I see. But just as much as our city needs a facelift, so does this yacht club, okay? And it's been stagnant for a long time. It's a major thing in our city, okay? Just as passionate as y'all are about getting our city up, we need the same thing in this yacht scene. And Terry does not have a bond issue, so he's funding a thing out of his pocket. And I will tell you, I'll be honest with you, I've been a member of the club for about a little over a year now. I didn't want to join it. I wasn't going. I didn't like the way it looked. I wasn't going to be comfortable bringing my clients there, but my lovely wife stepped in and said, I need to talk with Terry. And then he showed me the vision of what he was trying to accomplish. And this is the type of thing we want in our city, and we're going to be the best city- And we're gonna be the best city in South Florida, we need a yacht club that we can be proud of. That's exactly what he's trying to do, okay? I have confidence that he's gonna find some of these zoning issues and straighten them out, but supporting him on this is gonna make our city a better place. It's gonna be a, a great facility, and I will tell you, I have a lot of really good friends out here that I've met in the last year. And those of you that aren't members of the yacht club, I suggest you come out and see what it's about. It's a lot of fun. Thank you very much, guys.
I say no booting and hulking, I know it's hard, I know it's hard not to do, so. Who's next, come on up.
Worth a try.
Worth a try.
Was worth a try.
Joe Canjano, forty-one thirty Northeast 30th Avenue. I'm the neighbor that Terry was talking about.
You're the Joe, you're the Joe's house?
I'm the Joe. And I'm all for the yacht club, and I wanna talk to the people who are negative against it, who are positive for it.
Joe, Joe, can you, it's more appropriate to direct your comments up here. I appreciate that.
I understand that, but I wanna explain a story. Where are all yours? Let's think back in the nineteen fifties, we had an antenna on our houses, we got three channels. We moved forward in the fifties to thirteen channels of cable TV. We moved forward in the seventies to fifty-something channels, and eighties, sixty-something now with the two-hundred channels in today's world. Our community is from the fifties. They went into the Mediterranean-style houses, and now it's all modern, modern is what sells. Look at Miami Beach, everything's glassed. The telecom industry, we started with twisted pair wire, we moved forward with bundles of copper, and now we're, we're pyroptic cables, just like the cell phone. We went from the bricks to the flip-top to the smartphone and so on. This is like the smart home. This is what everybody dreams of having. We all wish we can do things mechanically, just like our kids were playing Nintendo, they don't get out of their rooms anymore, which is a good thing, 'cause it keeps them off the street. So I'm all for the club, and I know people have negative comments and positive comments. I'm the neighbor, I'm the most affected by it. Some of y'all might say, "So what, Joe, we're all affected by it? We're willing to deal with it?" Just like that gentleman said, 'cause he's right. We need, we need that diamond within Lighthouse Point to be the, the stone that is polished and brings people here, that's the attractiveness of it. Right now, you have a thirty-year-old place that looks like a dump, and believe me, those roads just come to my house. So take that into consideration, and everybody please remember me, 'cause I'll be the most vocal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
My name's Eddie Rodriguez, I'm at forty-thirty Northeast 30th Avenue, and I'm about six houses right down the block from the light club. I've lived in Lighthouse Point now for sixteen years, and I always stayed away from the yacht club because it just wasn't appetizing. And I'm a businessman in the community, I'm a Wendy's franchisee, and when the company came to us and said, "You gotta knock those old buildings down and invest, you know, six hundred thousand into putting up new remodeled buildings," we all cried, but I learned really fast that it's not about us, it's about our children and the people coming after us. And I have a saying that you're either green and growing or brown and dying, and when you have to invest into your communities, like investing into your family. And I believe that Terry should meet the compliance codes of the city, because I have to meet them every single time I build a Wendy's, and I'm a hundred percent in agreement with that. And you know that it's an expensive proposition, but we also have a right, a responsibility to contribute to the growing and the future of our company, of our, of our, of our team members, of our families. And the other thing that we can't put aside is that he's gonna create jobs, and creating jobs in the community is very, very important. And, you know, I admire Lighthouse Point, I'm a voter, I think this, we could be another Royal Palm if we want to, but we have to invest into the whole community, we have to start somewhere. When I built my Wendy's on the corner of Copings in front of Macy's, I did it there because I couldn't build in Lighthouse Point, but yet I'm still very proud of being in Lighthouse Point. I think we need to become a little bit friendly towards the opportunities that some people provide to us. So thank you for listening, and remember one thing, Dave Thomas rolled over in his grave if he saw those buildings with, with glass all over it, but the bottom line is, it's not about Dave, we haven't lost our DNA, and we're, we're doing more business today than we did in the past, because we're catering to the young communities that wanna do business with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anybody else?
I'm John Sammons, I live at forty-two hundred twenty-seventh Avenue, credit cards for the yacht club. This proposal is nothing more than a high-end residency, low-end entity, so, okay. I'm sorry the developer, I'm sorry the developer thinks he's gonna lose money on this, but I can only see this as an opportunity to make millions, somehow. Maybe its numbers aren't right, I don't know about that. I do know that I would end up with a wall of housing across the canal from my house, a canyon, actually, and, yeah, there are some thirty-five-foot houses, but they're not continuous, and there's only a few in my neighborhood. So I, I think you will completely change the character of Lighthouse Point by putting this kind of housing in what is supposed to be a single-family area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
I'm Dominic Klein, N2804 Marina Circle, Lighthouse Point, Florida. I've been a resident for forty-one years, member of the yacht club for twenty-six years. I live in the Marina Circle area. Most of you know it's the area around the Naughty Dog. We have some three-story townhouses, I suspect there were some variances and other things on to get those places built. There is a certain traffic density there, but looking at this plan, I think everybody needs to realize, in these buildings, not everybody's gonna be there all year round. A community like this and like where I live attracts people who live in and out, many of them have homes elsewhere, and it's attracted to people with money and voting community. A lot of people, I saw an editorial, or a letter in the paper the other day about older people and why we shouldn't support the bond issue. That's just plain stupid. I mean, who wants to have extra maintenance? When I'm done with my day, I don't have to worry about sprinklers, pool, et cetera, et cetera. People like me are gonna look for places like this. I have a friend who unfortunately lost his wife, he's gonna move out of really high-end, multi-gated facility in Vulcan, he would move right here, just if it was available. Townhouses, we live in, everybody says, "When's another one gonna become available?", because that's the kind of living a lot of people are looking for. The visual impact, I don't know, when I go down the canal, do I wanna look at a couple of empty old racquetball courts and some tennis courts where nobody's playing, probably hasn't played for five or six years? The other thing about the traffic, certainly there could be a problem with traffic when there are a lot of jabbering, if you already faced that problem, not the only community faces it. The movement around that area, if it's handled in other ways, it's not a doubt in the long run that it's gonna affect everybody as negatively as they thought. I think this is a great opportunity for Lighthouse Point. A lot of members who are current members would have quit if it considered along the same way. I really hope we can support development. I don't know about the variances and the net, you'll have to work it out, but a lot of my friends and I are highly in support of this community in this process. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm Martha Barbara Fielden. I live at forty-one thirty Northeast 26th Terrace. We bought our first property in Lighthouse Point in nineteen sixty-five, and we've been here ever since. The yacht club is Lighthouse Point. It has supplied our property value, it has supplied our community value, it's kept us safe. We're in Lighthouse Point. We're not bothered by a lot of things because it's Lighthouse Point. These people have worked very hard, and they've made a nice presentation. The bank will watch them very closely as they get prospective buyers for these condos, put down their money. We all know you have to own the bank, own the land before you can get a building loan. This is good, this is very good for Lighthouse Point, and I hope each and every one of you think it's a good thing. I'm sure you all have a residency here, and I, I hope you feel as I do. I'm an old lady, but that's all right, right?
Yes, it is, I had it.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Klein, N2804 Marina Circle, and I think it's important, I think it's essential to the community to have a yacht club. My husband doesn't know how long we've been a member, but we've been a member there already two years, and I raised all my children there. My best times I've had have been at that yacht club. I joined it when I first got here, and I involved myself in it, I got mixed in tennis, I was mixed in everything, and that's where I met all my friends, that's where my kids grew up, and I just think it's essential. And I think when people come in the community and see something like that in your community, it raises your property values, because none of us want a community without a place to go and share our fun with our friends and, you know, I just think it's one of those things. So I hope you guys will see it in your heart and in your mind to figure it out and come to a, you know, a, an agreement on what Terry can do. And Terry's worked real hard to make everybody happy since he's been here, and I think we should appreciate that. Thanks, guys, for that.
Hi, I'm Chris Thinkitt. My address is two-four-four-four Northeast 27th Street. I'm a little nervous, I'd never thought that I would be standing up here at a meeting like this, but this is something that I'm very passionate about. Also, for those that don't know, Twenty-Seventh Street is kind of similar to Ninety-Five. Cars speed down my street all the time, I can see the, see things from my house, and I can see people going fifty miles per hour, so I understand what it's like to live in an area of inconvenience and high traffic. But what I also understand is how things like this benefit what happens beyond me. I think past myself and what's going on at the end of the street, and there are businesses, and there are things going on, and I just make sure to keep my daughter in the backyard. So I wanna say that. My next thought is that someone mentioned Royal Palm. Royal Palm has an Instagram page that is dedicated to Royal Palm traffic inconveniences, and it is where the members of Royal Palm air their grievances about all the construction that is going on constantly. And I've seen pictures where, I mean, the car park where you can't even get through. But at the end of the day, do you think that the residents of Royal Palm are complaining when their home value, the cheapest home value is worth about two million dollars? You can't even get in there, first hair down, it's under two million dollars. Something that is important here is this is going to increase all of our home values. This is going to increase tax revenue, this is going to benefit us all in the long run big time. And I understand that your role is to protect this community, but it also needs to help to evolve this community, and evolution must occur, or else we are all going, we would all be living in nineteen fifty homes and with the old rundown yacht club, which eventually would fall down on top of us and injure the people in there. So I just wanna let it be known that I am all for this new yacht club. I have had some of the times of my life at the current yacht club, and I have met amazing families, I've spent time there, it has been a wonderful sort of time for my family, with other families, and Terry is such a wonderful family man. He has a daughter the same age as my daughter, he has an agenda that is for the community and for families, and I just hope that people can see that. We must protect but also evolve, and without that, we will just be stagnant. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Troy Ganser. I live at two-two-three-one Northeast Thirty-seventh Court in Lighthouse Point. I've only lived in Lighthouse Point for five years, but I feel like I've been part of Lighthouse Point for my whole life. I can remember sneaking into the yacht club with my father my whole childhood, slim, flat in the Olympic pool there. I don't think we ever got caught, and I hope we're not gonna get killed for it. But it's always been a tremendous spot for us. My family has owned a business in Lighthouse Point for almost forty-three years. I personally am a part-owner of that business now, and we own another business next door to it for almost the last five years. We employ quote-to-hundred people in our two small family-owned businesses, and I can definitely relate to the issues at hand. I live here, I own a small business here, and we deal with change very difficult. I don't always have the answers for it. Like Kristen mentioned, it's, change might be impossible, but, you know, evolving is usually quite necessary. I thank you guys for making sure you make the right decisions to protect our city, to make sure that the right things are going on, and that we have the right parameters and that they need to be met. I also appreciate you, Terry, and your company, for going out of your way to make sure you're, you're open and willing to hear, hear us as locals and as members of the community, and do what you can to fix that. I hope that between the both of you, we can make the best decision for this city, and I think that's the most important thing. I do believe the yacht club is and always will be a big part of the city. I think there's, we're in a predicament right now, and it's, it's a business, and I, I do believe that things need to happen in order for this business to grow and flourish. And, and again, I know it's very clear, I look forward to hearing all the, the things that we need to do to change, but, you know, I'm, I'm confident that, that Terry will move along to address these situations, and I'm confident that you guys will do everything you can do to make sure that he does that, you know, and it's, it's nice to be that confident. But I just wanna add that I, I love living here. I lived in about six different cities, as far as Tamarack up to Delray Beach, I was in Papano for ten years. I've only been here for five years, I never wanna leave, I want my kids to live here. The events that we do at the park, the movie nights, the Friendsgiving, the pumping carving, I think people would be very, very blessed to live in such a great community and to know so many great families. So I wanna thank you for all the work that you've done, and I just, again, hope that we can, you know, work this out together and that you- guys continue to do a great job and that Terry, you continue to have a great attitude and put the work forward. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, I'm Freddie. My name is Dale Gilbert and I live in Lighthouse Point on Thirty-second Court at twenty-five-hundred, uh, Thirty-second Court, uh, Northeast. And I think what Terry's trying to do is a wonderful thing to try to make the yacht club a better place. But I also practiced law for forty years and handled a great deal of real estate and represented a lot of builders and developers over that period of time. I know what Terry wants to accomplish and I wish him all the luck in the world, but, and I have a but. Terry's always there, trust me. I am concerned based upon my own experience that in order to accomplish what he wants to accomplish, it's going to take an unusual amount of financing and amazing amount of variations of zoning regulations. And that's okay, provided that the result is something that is good for this community. I have been a member of the club for twenty-one years. I'd like to say, I'd like to be here another twenty-five, uh, twenty-one years, but being eighty-five years old, I don't think I'll make it. Uh, but be that as it may, I think we have to rely on you guys and ladies to make sure that the traffic patterns are adequate for the safety of the community as a whole. I think, and I read it, I read it in one of the blurbs that came out, that there was an issue concerning a performance bond. You know, when you put townhouses up for sale, you put up anything up for sale, that doesn't guarantee that you're going to have someone buy it. And I would only urge you to go forward with your rules and regulations. Try to accommodate Terry as much as you can. Make sure that the traffic patterns are such, I'm sorry. Terry, you can finish. That the traffic patterns are such that it ensures the safety of the community, that there's adequate parking on the property for the townhouses that are going to be there and their guests who are going to certainly come. And for the magnitude of people who will be coming to what I hope will be, and we all hope will be, a very, very beautiful town, uh, uh, yacht club. Uh, but everything, everything has its measure and has its disciplines. And we have to leave it to you people to make sure that the disciplines that we have for the benefit of Lighthouse Point are protected. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Keep on.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Uh, my name is Megan Whalen. Um, my address is nineteen thirty-one Northeast Twenty-eighth Court. Excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous here. Um, as a Broward County resident and a South Florida native for, um, let's see, as well as a third-year homeowner and resident of Lighthouse Point, I represent the incoming demographic to this city. Ages thirty to forty, working professionals, um, with or without children, looking for a safe environment with friendly neighbors and inviting and engaging community to live and raise their families in. And I'm proud to say that Lighthouse Point is that place. I'm so nervous, so sorry. Um, a private club is recognized, let's see, I missed it out. A private club is recognized by most people as a social place where they can gather, share common interests, usually in boating, social events and dining, youth and family activities too. Prior to my fifteen, oh my God, so nervous. Prior to my fifteen months in management at Lighthouse Point Yacht Club, I worked at the Lauderdale Yacht Club for five years. I learned about the opportunity to be a part of the Seaman Exciting Challenge, a new club in my city, and I jumped on it. I want to be a part of history in the making. However, I am a huge advocate of honoring the past traditions celebrated by the club while understanding the need for and accepting that change is inevitable. As mentioned at the last city meeting, compromise will see this project through. I truly believe in Terry Patterson's vision for this property's future and the benefits that leads for our city. He cares about this community and cares about the final outcome. We have spent countless hours discussing enhancements to the current city to meet the needs of current and future members. Obviously, there have been many things that our current club doesn't have that other clubs in South Florida already has. Under Terry's vision and leadership, Lighthouse Point Yacht Club will surpass other clubs in amenities, food and beverage, banquet and more, including luxury residences, which will increase everyone's property value. The residents will put a sparkle back into what we all consider the gem, Lighthouse Point Yacht Club. In closing, I per, I personally appreciate everyone's time here and allowing the residents to share their thoughts about this redevelopment and the opportunities for our community to shine brighter. We will have a new attractive private club its members will be proud to belong to. We will offer exclusive amenities and exceptional experiences for our members and we will be the best yacht club on the eastern seaboard. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everybody. Uh, I'm Alex Jones. I'm a resident, Twenty-seventh Thirty, Northeast Thirty-eighth Avenue. Uh, been here all my life. Um, I also own five other homes in Lighthouse Point and probably some of my tenants are in this room. Um, and I could tell you, I just rented another house in one day because the tenant wanted to be right near the yacht club because that house was at forty-three-ten Northeast Twenty-third Terrace. And they come because they love that community and they love, you know, it made it easy to rent that house. But the other thing too, which I haven't heard, this is also a boating community. You know, on Saturday night, I tried, I took my boat out with a bunch of friends and you couldn't get into any restaurant around. And how nice was it to take a bunch of people to the yacht club for dinner? No wait or anything. And this is, this is a boating community as well, not just the housing. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you.
Victor Brisoni, forty-four eleven Northeast Twenty-third Avenue. And like someone said, I'm a little nervous myself. Um, I don't want to reiterate what you've already heard. This is a problem of codes, codes that don't exist that are, so if it takes rewriting a new code, I think the government likes to call it modernization. Terry is willing to put up all his profits to bring out a beacon to this community. We are Lighthouse Point and the lighthouse is actually in Hillborough. It's not even part of Lighthouse Point. We're creating a beacon, a very own lighthouse. And I think that's an important factor. It's becoming a community center. I am a member of the club, been there for four years and almost quit until I saw these plans and I said, let's see where this is going. I believe in them, think like everybody else. So if the codes need changing, it's modernized. I think you're all aware of this with the, with the bond and modernizing certain facilities. And quite honestly, when I know the gentleman left, if Terry's numbers are off and he walks away with a million or two, feminist markets, I'm okay with that. I really am. At the end of the day, my property values will go up and this community is going to gain, is going to gain from this. I'm not really concerned about the numbers. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Open mic. Leo? You know that Leo always goes west.
Yeah.
Coogey grass.
Bring in the heavy hitter.
You had a rap part before you started.
this club remained in Lighthouse Point. The big issue is you're faced with assuring that that clubhouse will be built and that a project won't get started, have difficulty, and then for some reason or other, they can't finance or build the yacht club. And then we're stuck with townhouses and no yacht club. So I hope that there's some legal basis, some contracts, some performance bond, some assurance that you can depend upon to assure that that club will be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to follow that? All right, we'll close public comment. Thank you, everybody, for coming, um, and expressing your, uh, your thoughts. Um, you do not fall on deaf ears, but it is going to be a difficult task in a long road ahead. So with that said, um, I'm going to turn it over, uh, to members of the commission and the planning and zoning board to present questions to Mr. Patterson, express thoughts since our last meeting, questions, observations. I know I have a couple of points that I wanted to follow up on, but I don't, by any means need to go first. So does anybody want to say anything?
Terry, excuse me, the biggest problem is parking. And I don't, I'm just trying to figure out how you can work with what John said and with the space you have available, especially if you have to count the yacht spaces. I mean, so that's a big problem that has to be somehow resolved for you to go forward.
That, that is true. That's something we're dealing with at, uh, Development Review Committee, uh, level. But a few things that John said are, I'm, I'm sorry, John, but they're just, uh, not a hundred percent accurate. Um, so the, the, the previous and previous space that we have on the plan that we submitted, so we didn't.
Let's stick with the parking. Let's stick with the parking.
Okay. Well, what John was telling you is what would be existing codes. The existing code doesn't allow for valet parking. Everybody knows we have valet parking. Every other city in South Florida allows valet parking. So what, what we're asking for is to allow the valet parking and then it brings our numbers a lot closer to what's needed.
Can you just interrupt a second? One thing that would be helpful to me and maybe others would be, maybe not a comparison of what the existing code is, but more of a use study.
Okay, but you asked me what John said and John was talking about existing code. And if I want to talk about use, that I can easily do. In fact, that's better for me to talk about our use. We are a yacht club, we're not a public marina. We don't need seventy-eight parking spaces for our boats. I mean, most of my members, a lot of my members are sitting in the audience right now. If anybody feels that our yachts are going to need seventy-eight parking spaces, please say something. But they don't account it regularly. We have a full marina at all times right now. And the marina takes up at a maximum maybe twenty, twenty-five parking spaces, which we've accounted for in our parking counts.
So maybe it would be helpful to you to keep records or something so that if you come to us and so, here's the use pattern that's been going on for years.
That's, yeah, that's no problem. Um, as far as the, um, the overflow parking that people might see from our hundred and ninety-seven parking spaces that we have right now, we, our parking lots cannot fit valet parking in them right now. They are, um, sixteen-foot, I measured, they're between thirteen to eighteen-foot parking spaces. They, they vary. Um, the drive aisle, you have to go into them at an angle. The drive aisles are, I think it was fourteen feet wide. Okay, so you cannot valet behind them. They, they, they designed for angled entries. We're looking to at drive aisles that are, that are twenty-four feet wide, that is the legal requirement to fit valet cars behind it for every other city that doesn't allow valet. So what John was talking about is things that we don't allow valet now. We're asking for the city to allow valet and then it helps us with forty-three more parking spaces and then thirty, uh, I think thirty-two parking spaces that we have on an overflow lot. Why I'm asking for an overflow grass lot is because if you look at the red rings, you'll see that we just create more and more and more parking, we're going to look like publics. And most people know that there's four, five, six times a year that we need these overflow lots. Um, people see, uh, when we're really busy, it's for Taste of Lighthouse Point, a city, a city event, Keeper Day, city event. Um, there's a few charity events that we do where people come in their own single cars.
And I want to ask those other questions. Don't you want to increase the frequency of that? I mean, your business, you want it, you want it passed every night, right? I mean, that's your motivation. I mean, you're concerned.
How is that going to cover the two-hundred-and-forty parking spaces that we're asking for?
No, no, no. You said there's, I just, I want to, I want to hear your explanation.
Okay.
You, you said you want, there are five or six instances where there's overflow parking and you have a vested interest in increasing the frequency of that. And I don't believe, I don't believe.
No, you're not correct. We love doing the charity event.
No, I know, you're going to continue to do them, but you, if you could do, if you could do, if you could do weddings every weekend.
But weddings are not the issue. A hundred and fifty people waiting to show up three, four, five, six people in a vehicle are not our issue. Charity events for a hundred and fifty people who come one person to a vehicle is what the issue might be. Not, not the wedding, not our membership. Our membership events, can they come three, four, five people to a vehicle? Never, ever do we have a problem when we have, we have membership events where we have four hundred people. We have some days when we're going through, um, Christmas or, or, or Thanksgiving, where we're running through four hundred and fifty reservations through over a three-hour period. There is no problem because of the flow of the traffic. The problem is if we do some sort of charitable event where we get the entire city or an entire, let's say the women's club, they're asking me to be able to put three hundred people, well, three hundred people coming to a women's club meeting, it's going to be three hundred individual cars coming.
Which women's club is that?
No, there was, somebody was, yeah.
I was talking.
I, I have, I have been asked by somebody, but.
But that's my, that's my point. My point is you're going to be attracted.
We will not, if we, I do not have the money to spend two, three, four million dollars on parking for the odd, uh, charity event where three hundred people come in as individual vehicles. We will have to turn those down or keep those limited to a certain amount of people.
Well, I'd be interested, just for Troy to clarify, I'd be interested to see if there's any way, and I don't want to do this to you because I want you to make money if you're going to do this. I have no problem, this is America after all. Um, but I don't know if there's, I, I believe you when you say that, that you don't, but, you know, I'm like a trust but verify guy, so like, I don't know if there's any way we can like say, you know, thou shalt not have more than eighteen three-hundred-person events a year. I mean, I, I believe you when you say it, but our job is to like make sure that doesn't happen. And that's, I'm just expressing a concern that we'll have to address, so, yeah.
I agree. So remember something. Lighthouse Point Yacht Club is the largest venue inside Lighthouse Point, so therefore attracts the charity groups we all love being a part of. But I do not have three, four, five million dollars to spare for additional parking.
When you said, but when you say you don't have, does that mean because you would have to sacrifice land to put that parking? Is that why you say?
As many as the code asks for right now. You guys are talking about usage, usage, we don't have a problem right now. We never have a problem except for the handful of times a year, and that is why I would like a grass parking lot. If the valet is accepted and we make the parking lot with large drive aisle that we can put the forty-three valet cars, I'm not even counting, we all know how Jeff parks the cars at the yacht club. He puts forty cars in that are illegal, those are not counted. I'm not counting the way that we park cars all along the place, all, all over the place. than the street around it. Okay, let me get back to you. Talking about what the code reads and what is our actual use.
That's what I'm gonna say. That would, it would help me when it comes time for my decision to have as much information as possible. So, I would like to see patterns, uses, and not just you saying it, statistics, some observations, because.
So, would you, would you consider us doing a count, or would you like us, every time we have these larger events, have a?
However you do it.
Like, call the police department to do a count? What would you like?
Mr. Gallo has a suggestion. Terry, maybe I could help you. Because I'm struggling with the same thing that Mike is. It's very difficult to try and evaluate what you're presenting, because we have no criteria at which to evaluate it against. I mean, we have an existing land development regulation ordinance that really doesn't apply, it applies to the site, but not to the site as you envisioned it. So, typically, and usually the developer's testimony is not really that credible, because he has a beneficial interest in moving the project in a certain direction. So, what typically is, you employ experts. And those are the people we believe, experts, because they are experts. So, in this case, for instance, you could say, well, we're all arguing about, it's no parking problem now, so there won't be any parking problem in the future. But we haven't seen what you're proposing to do in terms of, I wanna have that many memberships today, I wanna have less memberships in the future, more memberships in the future, different kinds of memberships. You could have social memberships. So, typically, like, you employ a traffic consultant. I think Stephanie knows what I'm talking about. And then off of your business pro forma, your operating business program, they would make a projection about what kind of parking is required versus what you're providing. And that person would testify. Right now, we're all just laypeople conjecturing about, is this gonna work or not? So, and I thought I heard mentioned that there was a traffic study, and you said you did another traffic study.
Let me explain. So, the traffic study that they're referring to, yes, we have employed a traffic engineer to do a full traffic study. And there were some misunderstandings by members, I guess, of the DRC, reading that saying that, that, the company doing the traffic study said that the traffic will go down. That's not what he said. He said that we have a commercial recreational use zoning right now. The potential of the amount of traffic that our zoning can create in the future, if we develop this property correctly to be successful with the ten acres of commercial recreation that we have right now, the potential of traffic is higher than if you take three-point-two acres of that out and make it single, residential townhouses. That is what his study said. In no way did he say that it's going to go down from what it is on the club today. And that is not what the rules and regulations of traffic study, the people that have to follow the guidelines.
So, as a member of PNC, boy, I'll be looking on something like that. And I believe it, because, I mean, I could, I could give you an argument on your side, on the other side. Example, I live down the street. When I come to the club, I walk. I don't take a parking space.
Okay.
So, four people come and go. So, someone has to do an analysis of the business plan that you're anticipating with that new clubhouse, and the impact of it, and make projections about X number of people living in those townhomes will be members of the club. People in the acres enable to be members of the club. People that have boats, like you said before, if they have a boat, they're already there. So, we have to have a report like that, because personally, I won't be able to adequately evaluate what you present unless I can read that.
I agree.
Because I think that's a key issue on everyone's mind. Another key issue on everybody's mind is traffic flow. So, again, you know, your civil engineering analysis of how, because all of this mixed-use development is really what makes it break, is how it functions over time. For instance, I know Chaney Brothers doesn't send like little teeny trucks when they deliver food. So, the question is, someone's gonna have to show us how an eighteen-wheeler gets onto the site. And your answer might be, they come at, you know, seven o'clock in the morning, so there's no conflict. I mean, I don't know what the answers are. But the pictures are certainly very pleasant, and I'm gonna reiterate what I said at our last public meeting, which was, this club will develop. It has to develop. The community has to move forward. Everyone said it tonight. And what's important about that is, everyone said it. The only difference is, we said that at the last meeting, and I don't feel like we've made any progress, because we're all saying the same thing. But we don't have any answers to the questions.
So, if you're-
When you come in front of PNC, I'm just giving you where my concerns would be. Traffic access, I mean, we have planners that'll evaluate percentages of pervious versus impervious. And actually, you'll set those standards. You may set new standards, like Papino has done. Papino has set new standards for, so that their urban core areas are developed without having to conform to suburban land development regulations, which really don't apply to mixed-use downtown activity centers. And essentially, we have to figure out how you could create an activity center that's critical to the future of Lighthouse Point, and make it function within this city. So, that's where I'll be looking at solutions. And whether it's thirty-three townhomes, twenty-two townhomes, fifty townhomes, I don't know. I'm gonna be more focused on, does it work or not? And I think you'd need to get the correct experts to show us that.
Understood.
Commissioner Long has something on that.
Yeah, just some clarification. On the parking with valet piece, talk about the centerpiece. It says a hundred and fifteen spaces, forty-three valet spaces. That's over above one fifteen, right?
Correct. That's just the centerpiece.
Would the, the hundred and fifteen spaces at self-park, but if they have a valet, they're gonna block you in the self-park? How's that work?
No, we have, we have a, we have a full-time permanent valet.
Right, you get Jeff.
Correct. And that others help them.
So, there would be no self-parking?
There is. You're only reading the centerpiece. You're not reading the other forty-three.
Just right here, in the center.
Correct.
Okay. So, that centerpiece would always just be valet?
Correct. Now, we, we know what functions are coming. Now, if we don't have any functions, or we don't have anything major going on, of course, it would be, it would be for regular. People don't just randomly show up at the yacht club. Functions are booked well ahead of time, and we were prepared about it.
Okay. And then, looking at parking lots, how much space would there between, if it was fully filled with your valet spots, including what, tandem, that's the term we're using?
Yeah.
Here and here?
Yes.
What's the space? Because it looks to me as, let's see, fifteen feet, maybe?
Oh, space left over?
Yeah.
Well, a vehicle is about eight feet wide, and they'll park about a foot from the other car. Normal parking space is nine feet wide, and it's a twenty-four-foot drive aisle, so twenty-four minus nine would be fifteen.
Okay. And I know there's a question about some trucks in, I mean, let's face it, last one, there's a lot of different cars, from golf carts to F-350s that are, what, twenty-two some odd feet long. I mean, how do you, how does that work? Because it would seem to me if you had any of these spots, you wouldn't be able to valet.
So, we, we're designing the parking lot to normal parking lot standards. I can't design a parking lot to accommodate twenty-two-foot F-350 extended cab duallys. That's not how any parking lot, not in publics, not your office, no way is designed that way, not even the city boards.
But would they be able to function, get around easily, in a big full-time party mode?
If one of those vehicles are parked in the valet, if one of those vehicles come to valet, they probably won't be parked in one of the problem areas. That's the beauty of a valet, is the valet gets to choose where he puts the cars and how he stacks them.
And one thing, as we go forward, you talked about how you envision things, and I just look, you know, love them or hate them, I have one, but a golf cart is just really more and more, I guess, accepted in Lighthouse Point and others. And just looking at the park, every time I go to the park now, there's like ten to twelve golf carts just there, maybe even more. But I don't know if there's something that we should start looking at, and maybe this might be part of it, where certain set sizes for a golf cart could be included in plans for parking, because obviously, they're smaller. Even I got a six-seater, but still smaller, not as wide. But something to consider is, if we will do any adaptation of our parking codes for the site, that maybe that could be built in somewhere, which may alleviate, because if you are a local resident, you have a golf cart, Linda Jean's not coming to an event, Paul Tresscutt is on, or, oh, yes, she will, she has a baseball hat.
Commissioner Long, that's exactly what we wanted in the first place.
I know. We're now kinda keep moving on about parking and talking about, you know, adaptations or changes or things.
A lot of cities have that in their code. They count a certain amount of parking spaces for the golf cart. But we need-
Did you send that to me, or nothing else?
Sure.
Some other codes?
Yes, no problem. And we would love to have that in our new overlay code that we're gonna propose at PNC.
Thank you.
Anybody down here? Commissioner Mocker, Commissioner Van Bostker? Anything?
Well, I was just gonna say, first of all, I went to the DRC meeting on the third of them, on the third, whenever that day was. And, you know, we talked about a bunch of different things, Terry, there. John brought up, and did a great job running the meeting I mentioned the other night. But I think that what Bill and everybody else is kinda getting to, as far as I am, we basically looked at this, and we've gone over it, and we've gone over it, and you brought people to go over it, and we've talked, I mean, at the DRC meeting, we talked about trees, we're talking about parking spaces. It's all important. But at the end of last, the DRC meeting, we also then went to what we're gonna do for the zoning portion of it. And as far as I'm concerned, that's where we have to start, because if there's no zoning, there's no worries about whether you could park cars there or not, if you're not gonna, you know, obviously. So, to me, it's important that we, we get to what we can go ahead and handle, and then from there, I mean, ultimately in the end, I mean, we have heard from the crowd this evening, we've heard from people, we see it. Well, I don't see it on social media, but everybody tells me about it. Ultimately in the end, all the, some of that other stuff is on you. I just wanna make sure that the zoning stuff, coming from Shell, coming from those folks that look at it, whether it's an overlay district, or we're doing, I guess I'm confused, because last time, we ended at the DRC meeting, and John was very specific, we were very specific about it. Listen, you need to bring us something back, so that we could focus on what we're going from here. Because for me, I feel as if we're kinda spinning our wheels a little bit here, and I would like to see us moving forward and stop. Kind of, I wanna know where we're going.
Before, before, I wanna follow up on that for your side, because I'm the same topic, and you can address both. Because, and this may be more of a question for your lawyer-
Right.
-as well. Because right now, this is proposed as a land use amendment. And to me, what you've kinda slid in a site plan-
Not slid in, but a site plan is there.
At request.
Okay, at the request. But the request from the petitioner, i.e. you, is for a land use change. Correct.
And so, I wanna be very methodical about this. And to me, land use is about the parcel of property. What does the planning and zoning board and the Lighthouse Point Commission want the future of that property to be? Do we wanna allow some sort of residential development on there? Do we want to change it in any other way? And so, what I wanna say to you is, if that, and this is your choice, I mean, how you want to proceed. If your choice is to do it, land use change, and then site plan, if the original site plan's about your project, and I just want you to hear it from me, you could run the risk of winning the battle and then losing the war. You might convince the planning and zoning board of the city of Lighthouse Point that some sort of land use change needs to be made, or should be made. It might not be the one you love, or it might be close to the one you love, or it might be some variation. But, and that might not get appealed, or that might come before the commission, and we may be fine with it. But that doesn't mean that that gets approved. So, I, they're two separate things. Now, there's ways around that, but that choice is up to you. So, I wanna hear whether you intend to go land use amendment than site plan, or try and package this all up in a bow and get it approved.
You wanna help me with this one? We're following the lead-
No, no.
-at the request of the city. We were told, we wanted to go just for the loop application. But we're told we need to do both at the same time. So, we, it's not our first, my first rodeo, or, or City's first rodeo. The city wants to do it this way, we're fine doing it.
Well, I guess what my point is-
You guys are not involved in the DRC meetings, in the DRC meetings, or in some of our meetings with the mayor and the town and city administrator. And we discuss these things.
Stephanie, would you like to?
Thank you very much again, Stephanie T. Baker. The reason that we submitted the land use plan amendment first is because only the city considers the site plan, only the city considers the zoning. The land use plan amendment takes up to probably more than a year. And it goes from the city, first from the applicant, then the city actually becomes the applicant, to the planning council. The planning council considers it in a public hearing. The county commission considers it in a public hearing. It goes back to the planning council, and then comes back to the city. When we submitted the land use plan amendment, we did that because that is a very complicated, unwieldy document. We knew what we wanted, wanted the ultimate density to be. But as a tool, we submitted a conceptual plan to the city, so that they could understand where, what direction we were going. But it was never meant to be a detailed site plan for consideration. And the only comments we got back were on the site plan. So, we found ourselves in a position where we said, okay, everyone, all the questions that everybody's asking, the workshops and everything that we're doing are site plan specific, so let's catch up on the site plan. And Terry has put a tremendous amount of effort into the site plan, but we still have not submitted the formal site plan. At the end of the day, this is business zoning. It's B-two zoning next to single-family homes. And we believe that making a land use plan amendment change, which is required to be able to do residential, is compatible with the adjacent homes. And we would hope that the commission, and the planning and zoning board, and the community feel that way too. Now, what the ultimate, I agree with you, what the ultimate site plan looks like, we understand. But the site plan doesn't take as long, because it really only gets considered by the city. So, we were trying to move the process along by moving the, moving the land use plan amendment forward.
Maybe I just need a little bit of education on it. Maybe it should be you or Ms. Melgren should do it. Probably the both, school me on it, I'm sure. But they kinda go hand-in-hand, though, right? I mean, in, in the land use amendment, the planning and zoning board may represent, recommend certain density thresholds, requirements, stuff like that. So, they do go a bit hand-in-hand. But what I'm, I'm trying to like, should I be thinking just about the future of this parcel, and whether I, as a city commissioner, think that some sort, T-word there, everybody, some sort of residential development should be allowed there, which is a big threshold question? Or should I be worrying about fifteen-feet parking spaces in front of dually trucks at this point? And I don't, I-
The answer is no.
Yeah, the answer is no, because right now before us is a land use amendment.
Exactly.
And I wanted Mr. Patterson to hear that, and everybody in the audience to hear that as well, too. Because, okay, I just wanna know. I'm glad to know, but we've never talked about it, so I like to leave things out public, so everybody knows we're talking. You know, I just, you can win the battle, we can lose the war here. I know it's like baby steps when we get there, but I wanted to clarify that. Ms. Melgren, did you wanna-
I could just say one more thing, if you can, Commissioner. What's important about a land use plan is that it is an extremely general planning document, that the county and the city look long-term. They say general things, like, we think this is appropriate for commercial. We think this is appropriate for residential. In this case, we went to the planning council. We did a lot of planning meetings with the planning council. And there are big, general categories that basically say, is this gonna be commercial? Is it gonna be commercial recreation? Is it going to be residential? In the residential category, those are big, big planning categories as well. Twenty-five units to the acre, sixteen units to the acre. We decided, together with the planning council, the director of the planning council, and hopefully with your, with Ms. Melgren as well, that we would self-restrict that even further than the category that currently exists in the county land use plan, which is sixteen units to the acre. You can self-create a more restrictive land use plan, which is called a dash line, which basically says, this is something that doesn't already exist, but we think it should be even more restrictive. And that's what we proposed, which was eleven-point-five to the acre. Now, again, ultimately, you're gonna have to get into the devil is in the details, what the site plan looks like. And we recognize that what we submitted, in many ways, doesn't comply with the code, because there's nothing else like this in the city of Lighthouse Point. There's nothing else that has a yacht club and residential around it. So, the-
Because it's not allowed right now.
Because the code, and the code doesn't really, exactly. But you know what? We're dealing with the same thing. I'm actually doing the Lauderdale yacht club. We're dealing with the same issue. The code was written after the club was built. And so, the code doesn't match the yacht club. It's the same. And so, we basically said, look, we recognize that it might be appropriate to have golf cart parking. You're seeing it more and more, and you get a credit of two per one. And it might be appropriate to have valet parking, because it's very common. And in fact, that is what happens at the yacht club. But we're being, we're being, we're being- comply with the code because there's nothing else like this in the City of Lighthouse Point. There's nothing else that has a yacht club and residential around it.
Because it's not allowed right now.
Because the code, and the code doesn't really, exactly. But you know what, we're dealing with the same thing, I'm actually doing the Lauderdale Yacht Club, we're dealing with the same issue. The code was written after the club was built and so the code doesn't match the yacht club. It's the same, and so we basically said, look, we recognize that it might be appropriate to have golf cart parking. You're seeing it more and more and you get a credit of two per one and it might be appropriate to have valet parking because it's very common and in fact, that is what happens at the yacht club. But we're being, we're being, we're viewed against the code as it sits today and I think the most recent document to your, your point that we were discussing is maybe it just makes sense to look at this holistically and say, do you, the City of Lighthouse Point, want this and if you do, let's create a master document that says, this is something that's really unique, that doesn't exist anywhere else in the city and probably that's going to happen in other cities too. And so where you're willing to have some give, like maybe a valet lot is appropriate and shouldn't be counted in the same way that you would count a normal lot, we'd like to be able to have the opportunity to create that document. It would be a public hearing, we would all have a chance to review it, the community would get a chance to vet it, but that probably is because we've hit so many walls with your current code, we'd probably think that is the best way to do it and we would hope to have the opportunity to do that.
So, and that's what I thought about before because I feel, when I said, I don't believe we've made any progress. I know you redesigned the site plan a lot of times, probably spent a very good amount of money and, but at what point will you present the development standards that you want to go along with this land use amendment? Because that's really what we need to negotiate, then we can measure the site plan against those agreed upon land development regulations. We don't have that yet. So I, I sit here thinking, okay, pretty pictures, I said it last time to everybody in the audience, look at the pictures, but it's not going to end up like that. So when do you bring those forward? And I just have one quick question. Do we have residential units in our comp plan if we put residential on the site or do we have flex unit pool? Where are we with that as in our comp plan?
Do you want to...
Or do we have to revise the comp plan?
The land use plan amendment is a change from commercial recreation to recreation. That is what the land use plan amendment does, but a land use plan and a comprehensive plan don't give you details on just that.
But where do we stand with, if we want to put residential units into that proposed zoning or overlay? Do we have enough open space in our community to support additional residential units?
Okay, again, for the record, Michelle Melgren, I'm the consulting planner. So they can do, the applicant can do a land use plan amendment to residential. We look at the open space and all of that as part of the land use amendment. I'm going to take just a step back to answer a few questions here. When the application for the land use amendment was submitted, it included as an exhibit a conceptual, a conceptual site plan and we started looking at the details of that, one, because it was presented and two, because when you do the land use amendment, is there carving out a piece to make it residential? The question is, is not only does the residential work, but does what they're leaving behind, the yacht club, is that going to function? And that's when we started to get into the details. Having heard, I think, that there's a general sentiment to go forward, it now becomes, as you suggested, two, two separate issues. It's a conceptual issue of, do you want it residential? They're coming in for dash lines at 11.2, 11...
Not only that, how much residential is part of the, it's part of the land use amendment, right?
Well, part of the land use amendment is, yes. So they're coming in for restricted dash line area of 11.2 units per acre. It would be that. I would suggest the conceptual site plan come out of the land use plan amendment package and it would just be a policy decision. Do you want 11.2 units per acre on the circumscribed parts of the land? That, that's number one. Separate from that is that's processing, if that's the will of the city to send that forward onto Broward County, would be then, Mr. Gallo, what you're, you're asking about and that would be the site plan itself, the devil in the details and with that would come proposed zoning regulations. I would hope the city would not consider it an overlay district, which is a brand new zoning district that would be unique to this parcel, but that would be the details that would be negotiated at that point along with the site plan.
The original why I say that, because toward the end of the meeting, the DRC meeting, we had a real big discussion about overlay district and we'd ever heard about, we didn't talk, didn't go back to just basically creating our own district, our own zoning district just for the yacht club.
Now, for the benefit of, while you answer Commissioner Van Bussen's question, it was a question, right?
Yeah, I'm going to get to the question, but what I'm going to ask is that, I think to the applicant's point is they're just looking for where the next step is. And to me, I just want to, I appreciate everybody, I just want to see where the next step is because I feel like we've had the same questions and to Mr. Gallo, he said the same thing. We're just continuously discussing and turning some of these things up and I want to see him put something together and so we can go, okay, this is where the idea is going, this is whether it's overlay district, the multi-district that he had originally, or something that's unique to itself and I want to know what your opinion is, is where do we need to go from here?
I think the next step would be to have the land use plan amendment application slightly revised, take out the exhibit of the conceptual site plan, to bring it over to P&amp;Z and the city commission for consideration of, do you want to change a certain acreage of land on this parcel to residential at 11.2 units per acre? If you change it to 11.2, it doesn't guarantee them that density.
That was my next question.
That was my next question.
Then, then that would prompt us, that would go, we go as...
Right, but it doesn't guarantee him whatever's up here. Basically it says that it's a possibility. I just want everybody to be clear with that.
And that's why I would want the conceptual site plan to come out of the application so that there's no inference that because that conceptual site plan is there that maybe the city was promising something.
No.
Then it would go over to the county separate and apart from that would come a site plan for consideration for negotiation and I, I think in this particular instance, because it's so unique, because there aren't regulations, because the code could use a little updating, this is the perfect opportunity to go ahead and see what works best from a design standpoint and then work with the regulations to ensure that that happens.
Can I, can I, yeah, that was, that was a good question. That was a good question. Can you, for my benefit, so I can hear it articulated by someone that is an expert on it and also probably for the benefit of the people in the audience, overlay district, difference between overlay district and new zoning category for this parcel perhaps? What, to me, as a layman in this area, it sounds like six of one, half a dozen of the other, to be honest with you.
It kind of is, but there's a fine distinction and an overlay district, an overlay district would, I'm not quite sure what it would accomplish exactly because you'd have, it would be created to do a brand new zoning district that contemplated mixed use.
Right.
And then it would be developed as all one parcel, a unified parcel that would take into account the separation of the commercial uses, which is the yacht club.
And it could preserve the yacht club as a yacht club on that parcel, which is something that we...
Absolutely. We could tailor and write those regulations to be as specific and as detailed as needed to satisfy that the city.
Okay.
Wouldn't that have to be done in conjunction with land use amendment?
No.
No.
Again, land use amendment is simply, do you want 11.2 units per acre maximum in some form or fashion or should this remain commercial recreation's land use designation?
So, Gallo, I guess I'm calling. Well, because if you, if you create a new zoning district, which I would favor, you may find that there might be other opportunities in the city for that land use designation to exist. The only thing about overlay is that you, the concept of an overlay, I don't want to step on Michelle's shit, but it's an overlay. That's the zone, that's the overlay. If this ever goes away, it reverts that.
Oh, I get it, okay.
So, that's the difference.
We can remove the overlay district easier? Yes. Our city attorney would like to throw a question to...
Well, Mike, throw up city attorney, just to answer a couple of the questions on the next steps. Mr. Gallo, you were asking when you would start getting the concepts, it was discussed at the DRC and I believe the applicant is intending to do this, but at your next meeting in the mayor, I mentioned it before, your next meeting on November 6th, they're going to come to you and kind of engage in a dialogue with you on the issues because at the DRC meeting, it was left with, we want to see a list of the items that you believe you need for your development to be successful that isn't consistent with our current code and those are the issues that would need to be addressed in any new zoning district or overlay district or whatever. So in answer to your question, the next step was to engage with the planning and zoning board, that discussion of what the concepts would be for any changes to zoning that would, they feel they would need to facilitate their development. And then the first step in a land use amendment is currently scheduled for an earring before planning and zoning board at its December 6th meeting. No, December 4th, sorry, I get stuck on that. Once, and then that has to go to the commission for adoption, for transmittal, then it goes through the other steps. In the meantime, once gone through those other stages, if the applicant desires to do so, they can go through some of the preliminary steps for the zoning and whatnot so that at the end of the day, when it comes back, when the comp plan comes back a year from now, whenever it is, ready for the adoption, everything else is teed up for review and approval at about the same time. So those other things can catch up with the land use down the road.
Another procedural question. Land, land use, land use amendment goes before P&amp;Z, 11, I'm picking a number, trust me everybody, I'm picking a number, 11.2 per acre gets approved, gets transmitted, Mr. Patterson goes on a parallel path, the land use amendment goes to the, what's it called?
The planning council.
Land and council.
Then the county commission.
Then the county commission, then it comes back up. Do we change it?
Back to the planning council. Because at the end there, I think you're going to get what comes out of that mix and that, but you either adopt it or you don't. I'm not sure if they can change it and then not have to go back through the process again. They might have to go through the process again if you change it, but I'm not, I'm not comfortable with answering that tonight for sure.
Okay.
I think it might depend on if you make it more than that, things like that, depending on those two things.
Sorry. You can reduce it, you couldn't increase it.
We can reduce it, we couldn't increase it. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. It goes city, planning council, county, planning council, city.
Okay. All right. Just one, one statement, most of the, just taking notes up here, almost everybody that got up this evening from the citizens that came to speak spoke about the yacht club and the, and the need for the yacht club and the actual club itself. Very little was mentioned about, about the town. And this whole first step that you guys are talking about with the, you know, changing the use of what this is zoned for is the most important part. That's, that's the townhomes themselves. So our, that's where Mr. Gallo is, is talking to is, and you said the same thing, there's no guarantee, even if we do go through this and it goes back to there, that, I think that Mr. Patterson's main concern is the number of townhomes he can get on this property in order to make financially feasible for him to keep the yacht club going. There's no guarantee for him, even in this, in what we're doing, that he's going to end up with 33 townhomes. I know everybody's main concern is the use of the yacht club and it's a zoning community and it's going to be modernized and, and I think we all want to see that, we all want to take a step forward. This is, this is an opportunity for us to, to look at our codes and look at where we've been for the last 50 years and see if we can't take a step forward, but at the same time, I want Mr. Patterson to be very aware that even if this does change, there's no guarantee that he'll get his 33 townhomes out of the process. And that's the main, those 33 townhomes, I would imagine, is, is that's what you're banking on to be able to make this yacht club go. And what the citizens are banking on is the yacht club going and I think they're far less concerned, there's a few where they're concerned with the view of the, of the townhomes from across the canal and all that, but the townhomes being built is what's going to provide the rest of what the citizens want and we just want to be sure that there's no misconception that that, even though we get the land zone, that the zoning changed to residential and commercial, that we're going to end up with a number of townhomes that he's going to need to make this successful. I don't, I just, I didn't hear anybody address, other you guys up here, I don't understand as far as the citizens, they all want the yacht club.
I think what I heard was a lot of, we want, we want, yeah, we want the yacht club, we want to see support of Mr. Patterson, but we're going to leave it to you guys to figure out how it, how it works. That's why we get paid the not so big trucks up there, but that's where the rubber's going to hit the road and that's where the devil is in the details. So, I mean, it's well said, but that's, that's, that's what the hard part is.
His thinking, his, Mr. Patterson, and, and again, they've done quite a, quite a lot of work. I compliment you on the work you've done, the idea of giving us this conceptual view of what you want to happen, I think people are embracing this and trying to move forward with it, but we're, we're back to what Mr. Gallo said, is that we have no, we're spinning our wheels.
Quite frankly, that's why I'm saying, it's almost, quite frankly, and I appreciate all the money you've spent on it, trust me, it's almost distracting me from, it, it really is almost distracting me to see all the pictures and to see all this because it's step one, as the petitioner has put it forward, is are we going to allow mixed use, for lack of a better term, on this property and to the extent we are going to allow mixed use? So I'm really, really, really trying to not look at the pretty pictures. I really am.
Good question. Hmm. The most difficult question of the, the question of the ages, so we're going to have to solve it up here tonight. We're not going to solve it up here tonight. Anything else? Commissioner Johnson?
I, I just have...
I'll let you, I'll let you speak, Mr. Teabaker.
I just have one thing to add to what the commissioners have said, that I think all along that all you folks that are here tonight and all of us, you know that we're all love the yacht, the yacht club as much as you do, whether we belong or we don't belong, we, we love the yacht club. We recognize how important it is, we absolutely recognize how wonderful it would be to have the base lip and look great like this, but we also have the responsibility of making sure that it happens correctly and I think that's where we're stuck right now, that we all know, yes, we want this, but how are we going to do this so it's going to fit into our parameters? So it's going to be a process and hopefully we can move forward and not just keep staying, spinning our wheels.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Thank you again, Stephanie Teabaker. I just wanted to respond, that's our preference too, our original preference, because it takes so long to do a land use plan amendment, it takes over a year. Our preference would be to move forward on the land use plan amendment and use that year to work with the city and the community on the details and that's why we didn't submit a site plan application. It's really premature at this point to be having these discussions about setbacks and we understand that we have challenges. We, I defer to Michelle, she is an absolute expert, I defer to her, whether it makes more sense to create a new zoning category that's more of a mixed use or, or an overlay, that doesn't really matter to us. It's, it's the vehicle that you create to allow these two uses to work in conjunction with each other and we would love to have the time to work with your staff on creating what that best vehicle is and we did create the document that you asked for. We are prepared to come forward at the next planning and zoning board meeting. It's a, it's basically a list of, here's where we don't comply. That document does exist, I have not yet submitted it to the city, but I will do, obviously, well before the meeting and that is, I think that's really what everybody's asking, how, how far out of compliance are you, you know? I mean, how many parking spaces are you, are you off those kinds of details? We do have that document.
In essence, you're completely out of compliance because the parcel doesn't allow residential properties on it.
Well, that's true.
I mean, that, I mean, that, you're completely, you're complete, I mean, I said it's still a little of a project, but that's the truth, right?
It's accurate, but it's off the B2 zoning. We already have business zoning next to.
Right, but you don't have, that doesn't provide for residential.
Because of the land use.
Because of the land.
That is correct, yes.
Yes. Um, did you have anything?
Uh, just one thing, you know, it's important that we understand where we got here and Terry has spent an incredible amount of money on plans. I've seen six different sets of plans, maybe seven now, that Terry's spent money on pairing. I remember the original plans that were 10 single family homes and 10 townhomes, those morphed slightly between June of 17 and October of 17, so it was still 10 and 10, an entrance area, things like that. But at the end of the day, the reason we went down the path we did is that there was a concern that Terry could get his land use amendment, he can't build what he built, wants to build because he can't comply with our codes. So I think now that we've got a fairly comprehensive list, we can now start a conversation of how are we going to do that in conjunction with considering the land use amendment? The, at the end of the day, I don't know what matched numbers. I don't think it's 33, I'll say that myself, I think that's too high, but I will say that. But at the end of the day, we've got to figure out how can we make something work in this parcel. Period and story.
Anything else outside of the table? No? Okay. Commissioner Mockers, why don't you...
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for taking time out of your schedules to come tonight. I cannot tell you how important it is to, to hear the feedback and for us to be able to have some interactivity with, with our residents. You know, we just, a month ago, had public hearings on our taxes, deciding whether we're going to raise taxes or not.
Other than Leo, two people showed up. We have two of three that were here. So what this underlines is there's an emotional investment from most of the folks in this audience about the yacht club. We get that, we really do. This is an important entity of our community. It's very important to our city. It's important for us to see that this succeeds. But as you can see, it's enormously complex. And if we let the lawyers have at it, it's going to take forever. Some of us are not lawyers.
Some are just simple farmers.
Some, some of us are just simple folks that are going to, are going to try to come up with some compromises to try to get this to work. Folks have talked about how we have to move forward. We have younger people coming in that want change and we need to change. We do. I think this whole discussion demonstrates just how out of date we are with some of our codes and some of our plans. Housing changes are, housing needs are changing. The demographics of this community are changing and we have to be responsive to that. But anyway, I wanted to thank everybody for their patience. This has been very helpful. We need to go through this process. We need to have more of this. The more we can interact, the better it's going to be for the community at large. The more transparent we can make this process, the better it's going to be for everybody. But understand, we do want it to succeed as long as it's good for the overall community and that codes and requirements and legalities are met. We'll figure out a way to solve this and make it work for the city.
Okay. Let me summarize for everybody, next steps, next meeting. So November 6th, at 7:30, zoning meeting. Yeah, it'll be, Terry and Stephanie will be presenting their concept at that meeting. On December 4th, I understand that there'll be, you're planning on a formal presentation of planning and zoning. Okay. Whether or not a decision's made on that, that'll be up to planning and zoning. Assuming there, whatever there is a decision made, then it would come to the city commission. The city commission would then have a vote, and then it would be transmitted to the county. The one thing I'm not sure, Stephanie, I haven't heard anyone say, this is a 10 acre development, as I understand it, which is right on the cusp of whether or not it needs to go to the state. Has, does this have to go to the state?
We don't believe so, no.
Okay.
It's just under.
Okay. No, Michelle? So it's under, I'm sorry.
No.
10 acres, that's the kind of race my.
The land use plan amendment area itself is far under that. So we'll not go to the state.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, Mr. Patterson and team, you guys worked very hard and we are here.